What are you watching?
Um, I'm talking from working.
Oh, today?
Yeah. They're supposed to be talking about town managers. See if you can get the sound going. Is that my phone?
Yeah.
Let's see this thing.
Brown dogs.
I hate those things.
Yeah.
We like to do that.
Yeah.
That holds up for far.
It's tough, tough to kill.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I have that song.
That's good.
Okay, so.
Some time to kind of judge.
That's good.
All right, so anyway, there's the key areas that need coverage and files transferred. Or, you know, someone to oversee and work on. Some cases, they're reporting to your development mission.
No, I've never had it. I haven't formed it.
I mean, I guess they're the key time you're in. Just someone not on mute. Okay.
And are you uncomfortable with Amber still taking lead on special events? You mentioned Wayne doing it. I didn't know if you.
No, it's just she's going into her busy season, so I don't know if it's ideal.
I haven't scored. They're not a child employee.
Right, you would probably then have to contract it to her.
Amber bump it out and then something designated or delegated to run it to the search center.
No.
No.
I mean, it's our form, our.
Yeah.
We have to get sign off from all the department heads. It'll get routed in and start with one of them. And I say Wayne, just because they, if they're gonna get stuck on someone's desk, it's his.
Yeah, I think they're not. Street.
Yeah, the one, the ones coming up really are Lake Fest. We, you've already approved several that are annual, so I don't suspect there's gonna be a lot of them.
That's certainly an easy one on the list.
Yeah, and if there's one that is in the park, Amber usually presents it anyway, so.
On the list of the Dootens Ray Project, Marty also brought in approach me today. With an interest in that and asked if we were willing to work with him on it. Stew and also just that I don't mind since CRC is a major funding source for that.
Yeah, I think that it's gotta be someone from CRC, Shannon as the grant administrator, but only for the ready part. And Jim Clevenger.
Marty and Jim and Bob because of the.
Yeah, I've been keeping Bob and Karen in the loop on stuff with this. And Karen and Karen attended the last project meeting on the. So I'd like to keep that going.
I also think we'd like to stay.
Mm hmm. Yeah, cuz you're up to, you're up to date on everything and you were at the last one. Yeah.
In the loop for some time.
Then you can keep more, you could be the council member on and Marty could be the CRC member on. And then I think you and I should probably have a meeting together with Marty and maybe Jim Clevenger. You know, get him up to speed. And then Sally. And Marty and Jim Clevenger can keep the council informed. But I'd really like you to keep Karen and Bob in the loop on any meetings and that sort of thing. For comp planning. I'll need to get back with MACOG. Last time I met with them about this, their schedules were pretty full. They're doing comp planning with a couple other communities right now. They were contracted to do all of this public engagement and, you know, facilitating the surveys and facilitating our meetings. They have a meeting with me before each of the monthly Crossroads Culver meetings. And they'll either want to continue that with somebody here or we need to go back to them and increase the contract, have them do all of the writing. I need to gauge whether they want to do that or not. Last time I talked to them, they were pretty booked is what they said. Zach wouldn't make a commitment to it. I have not done a lot of writing on this yet. I've started the first chapter of Profile chapter. The goal was for me to do a lot of the narrative writing and them to do the other stuff. So we're gonna have to make a change either way. And I can tell you right now, I'm not going to leave here and do that work for free. It's, it's like writing a grant, a large grant. So you're either gonna have to out contract it to MACOG, contract it to me, or contract it to a third party.
You said MACOG is pretty booked up?
Well, last time I talked to him, that's been a month ago. So I'd like to have them tell me whether they're interested or not. If they are, I think that's the right way to go.
I would say they prefer it for them.
Or less.
Only two in mind.
Hey, what?
So, and, and I think we were getting to a close stage on concluding the deep dive work that we did on some topic areas after the surveying work. That, once all that gets collated, there's one more meeting on that, that'll all get collated. And then that will go out to the public for feedback. Then come back. So the writing phase can occur during, you know, that phase that it's out to the public for feedback. Then it'll get updated again. There will also, I get, I think you guys, a couple of you have been involved enough on Crossroads to know there's going to be a land usage based, this as well. So right now, the Plan Commission Committee is not booked for March. So I'm planning on seeing if MACOG will come in and be part of their agenda. Because some of that work needs to be done with the Plan Commission and BZA could be invited as well. But typically, you have your Plan Commission members go through land usage. So there's still some other areas that have to get completed that are outside of Crossroads that MACOG will handle. NDOT is the sidewalk trail projects. One is Lake Max Phase Three and one is the Regional Stellar Project. Those are both following the same schedule because NDOT and us thought it would benefit the town if they got bid out together. And Bob has been overseeing those on that end. Bob is NDOT certified. So I want to continue to have Bob and the engineer tour group in that case work on that. Keeping in mind, Bob also has the VS Engineering Project with Lakeshore Drive and the Midwestern Engineering Project with the water project on the North End. All of these are gonna be going on at the same time, so patience is a virtue. The Stellar Park Project, Amber and Shannon oversee that and can continue to do that. Shannon, as you know, is very good at communicating with the town. Amber is as well. We covered special events. Building Commissioner, we've received one qualified applicant. I've set up an interview for next Thursday. I have Karen and Bob attending that interview. Bob's a member of the TRC and much of what the Building Commissioner does ends up in a lot of communication with Bob as well, so I'd like to have Bob in that interview. And Karen as well, cuz Karen does all the public notices. There's whomever fills that role would need to be working closely with several town personnel. So I've asked them to join that interview. We'll see how that works out. We have not received other qualified applicants as of today other than the one. We're gonna have to talk about that area more, cuz if I leave before someone would start in that role, there's gonna be some training issues. We, we would likely need to contract with the county. And I want to do that anyway for some training. If someone started next week, I want them to learn the online system. And Lori and Ty are the two who would do that best. But we have to be respectful of their schedules and their own workloads, which are quite heavy at the moment because they're down a staff member. So I will get in touch with them before our council meeting and kind of feel out how that might work.
We do that through their employment with the county or independently contract with them?
I think you'd probably have to do it as a separate contract service.
Between them individually and the town, that's what they're going through the county.
It would go through the county. Yeah, they can't contract outside of that. Yeah. But they, I think they would be ideal for, because even though Karen's been with the system, there's aspects of that system that Lori and Ty know inside and out. And we don't need Karen learning, taking all that on. And Bob's never really in the online system side of this. So I think you just who votes to work with the county people who are very good at it. And that, that, that is also going to, whoever would fill that role is gonna have to learn the zoning ordinance, scheduling of Plan Commission BZA, how you prep for that. There's a lot there. And if I'm not here to, to do that, you're gonna have to figure that out with me before I leave. Somebody will have to take that on. We already covered the Housing Ready Grant. Any CCMG going on, like the Lakeshore Project, will fall under Bob cuz he's NDOT certified. And he can bring to council any paperwork, any sign offs. We, we already have a schedule for bidding that project out, so Bob is on top of what's going on there as it is. Crossroads Culver, some of you are already involved in Crossroads Culver. If I stay involved in it, it'd be as a volunteer like the other volunteers, but I don't plan on sharing it. I think that should be a town of Culver representative. And County Crossroads, Marshall County Crossroads. Culver has always had a town representative, as do the other communities. I'm an officer of Marshall County Crossroads. So Culver has the option to put someone on the County, County Crossroads team. In the past, it's been the Town Manager. And I do recommend that we have somebody join that because it's an open position right now.
Is what you said, Paul, different than?
He, he chairs the marketing, communication side and is not an officer. Anyone who's a chair by our bylaws, it doesn't matter what town or entity they represent, they're just chairing that subcommittee. So there's still an open rep for Culver. John Vanderwill is the rep for Argus. He does not, he doesn't sit in a town management type of role. Ward Byers for Bourbon is Town Council President, but he represents Bourbons. Plymouth is the mayor and Sean Cerisi. La Paz is the Town Council President, Roger Ecker. And in Bremen, it's the Town Manager, Trent Woldy. So it just depends on the community who you wanna put on that. It does not have to be appointed by our board, though. We do not do elected official appointments to the Marshall County Crossroads team. But the team isn't gonna pick somebody, they're gonna, you know, assume it's gonna be somebody from the town that wants to participate. And yeah, there is, there are some Culver people involved on that team, even as members of subcommittees, not necessarily in chair positions or office of positions.
The option to put somebody on that, on that team, is that in a chair position or is that just as?
They would be on the steering committee. And anyone who has, every community has a rep on the steering committee. And with Culver, it's always been the Town Manager. So, and it might be something you wanna invite the new person to take that role. And that's fine. It's not like you have to do it tomorrow. I just didn't, I wanted to put it out there so that it's not forgotten about once a month. And that same team is the team implementing Regional Stellar. We're required to go to quarterly meetings. And that same team is the team implementing Regional Stellar, we're required to go to quarterly meetings, so there's one coming up on Monday. Um, and uh, a a smaller group of us from the team sit with Okra, NDOT, IHCD, we report on all the projects, just like Bob does with our quarterly meetings with NDOT and Okra, just like we did with our projects when we were Stellar. We've already implemented Culver Stellar, so we don't have those anymore, but um. And and then you really do want someone on this end who's dealt with those projects to be on that quarterly meeting report. Um, but Marshall County Crossroads organizes that, they've put out the notice to the entire team, hey, here's the list of quarterly dates, we have them all for 2023, so I can give them to you. Um, and then in Argus's case, John Vanderwill, their rep is not the one who attends it, he sends Mark Vanderwill, because Mark Vanderwill is the one dealing with the contracts, the engineers, et cetera. But usually we have someone from every community at that meeting. That's all I had so far into this. I didn't put day-to-day operations or department head meetings or policy handbook updates, some of those things that we've worked on internally with day-to-day operations. And I really don't think we need to have liaisons for day-to-day operations, you already have department heads handling that, they report in all your meetings, I don't think you guys need to go sit with them while they report.
Yeah, they've been here, yeah, just fine. Do you, Karen, meet with them as a group besides individual meetings?
Yes.
I wonder if it is that on a monthly basis?
We usually meet after the council meetings on Wednesdays morning.
And I wonder if if at least they have a council number attend that meeting, just um, especially until there's a new town manager?
I don't think it's needed. I think it was Karen there, I mean, we usually. What we do is we communicate out decisions made here, if they, especially if they weren't at the council meeting. Then we work on the policy handbook, a lot of times we're we're communicating about events coming up. Um, we we communicate more than the outside event people, so we figure out, is there a need? Uh, if there's something rolling out that's new, like insurance, or Karen needs us to fill out whatever form, because we're updating something, or you know, HR type of issues. Um. That's, I mean, it's really day-to-day operations focus. And I think they, whoever comes in and starts doing those meetings can you know, get that person in in touch with what's going on there.
Did anything, Bill? Have we heard anything from Mitch?
No, I just put a call into him, asking if he wanted to call in, I haven't heard anything, uh, Karen, have you?
No.
Um.
I haven't either.
I don't know who heard, have you, if you heard from him in the past?
I emailed him last week.
Okay.
And he said there were no applications, but then I've gotten a couple on Indeed. And I'm trying to figure out if he has access to that, because I didn't post anything to Indeed, so I'm assuming he did. So he should have access to those, but I have, I honestly just haven't had a chance to open them and look at them.
But there've been two from Indeed?
There's a couple on Indeed.
Jenny, what's your timeline now?
Um. I am assuming March thirtieth right now. Um, I have a conversation coming up next week with my prospective employer, so I will know better in a week or so.
So with even the names listed here, those responsible people, you you'll set up a meeting with them, or they'll reach out with you to set up a meeting and get sort of updated on on what's going on? You needed us either individually or collectively to do anything else, systems?
Uh, no, just fill in the gaps. You know? I've I've put in where I think uh, key people need to be involved. Um. But in other areas, that's up to you guys.
What are the areas do you think that we needed involved in, Karen?
Um, Crossroads Culver. Building Commissioner training, possibly, um, or and or other Building Commissioner task. Plan, you'll have to figure out what you want to do there, I will, I will get you some information from MACOG to see if they're interested in giving you a proposal.
It's just proposal, he said that he probably have some people to interview in a certain given period of time. I think we need to, you know, get back to them and say, you know, where exactly have you advertised? See if we're missing some areas. There's no point, you don't want Karen advertising
Alright.
in the same area that that uh he is. Just to make sure that we got our bases covered on that.
Well, what do we do if Mitch doesn't come up with it?
Well, I would say we need to find he's not, yeah, he's not the only person that uh hunts down applicants for for hire, so to speak. I don't know the names, but there's gonna be some out there.
The aim blog made out some recommendations for other recruiters. We posted out there, but I think we have to be careful, because we have contracted with Mitch on the weekend.
I think he was putting something out there anyway, so I've got I have somebody that I can contact to see our other names directly, instead of putting it out to
Okay, the group.
the world.
Well, I I'm kind of under the opinion, I don't know what anybody else feels, but I'm kind of under the opinion that when we hear from Mitch, um, if and when we hear from Mitch. But I think we need to kind of give him some kind of date to show us some progress, or we just hand him and go away.
Well, I I think first off, you know, contact him rather than waiting for him to
Well, that's what, yeah, I just put a call into, but he could be, yeah.
But um.
I also think you guys are assuming the worst about O2 right now.
Yeah, and it, you know, it does take some time to get applications in.
Yeah.
Um. They don't always apply the first day they see the the advertisement. And, you know, the last time we got some applicants to get absolutely no qualifications, so.
Yeah. What do you think, Bill? You've been sitting down like a sphinx. And we do so much. The last time we had, we had Mitch, I'm trying to remember back the timeline from when we contacted him, contacted him, so when he came and bought us some applicants, I don't think it was any week or two.
Thirty days, it was a couple weeks.
Yeah, it was about two to three weeks or so more.
I just, I just don't know.
By the end of it, I think we had around thirty applications, maybe.
All I remember is he narrowed it down to six, and then he narrowed it down to three, that those figures stick in my mind, but.
There were several that were definitely not worth a look.
I think like thirty days or something.
To say.
Yeah.
I think you follow one with, we just need to follow up with this.
Right.
Stay on until he responds back.
The primary point of contact on that, I think, is you and Karen is the primary points.
What's that?
The primary points of contact, contact with Mitch are you and Karen is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have an email for him, but you do, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, you're, the other sphinx, what do you think?
I'm, sorry, I mean, a lot of these things I'm not real familiar with, uh, like the Crossroads.
Bill, here's his email, write it down. Okay. M Ripley, two, the number two.
Just saying.
M Ripley, two, at AOL dot com.
Okay. Thank you.
Say that, you know, like, Bob, any of the department units that are in charge of these, if they run into a problem, they contact one of them. I mean, whatever I could. Assist. Not sure I could assist Bob with anything other than moral support.
Yeah, that's what he needs a lot.
Jenny, I'll look at that county crossroads.
I hope your interview goes well. Position.
Yeah, I mean.
See, that's one thing.
Part of the issue here is that, you know, we get we don't have an economic development director for Culver, or like that one person who gets the call. Um, I get calls for the Building Commissioner stuff to meet people on site to look at their parcel to, you know, I did two or three of them just last week, um. I get calls because someone thinks they might need a variance, how do you fill out the application, I mean, there's a lot of knowledge involved in that. That really took me a good six months to get fully up to speed, I mean, I I was familiar enough when we parted ways with with Chuck, I felt comfortable enough. Um, Ty is definitely the number one asset in that world. Um, and so if we don't have someone hired and in training, or at the very least, you know, which even someone hired in training is going to need to lean on someone like Ty, so we we need to figure out the logistics of that. Um, and that could be, you know, Ty is on call, he he is today with me, but I don't have to call him nearly as frequently, and um, and the other thing is, Ty's not just available when someone walks in to the window, and we get that every other day, I get someone at the window, I need you to look at the site plan, or I have a question about the zoning ordinance, or I have a question about Plan Commission, when do they meet? Uh, do I need to be in front of them, and a lot of times they don't. But you don't know what's walking in the door, and that's not knowledge that your deputy clerk can answer, it's not Karen's uh, you know, that that's definitely on the Building Commissioner's plate. Um, so it's not something you can blow off if we don't have someone hired. Somebody has to be able to take those phone calls, those emails, et cetera. Um, even if it is to say, I will get back to you, and then you know, um.
In that way, you could, you know, if you had a point person, then then
Yes.
get all the questions in line, and maybe make one phone call to Ty or email him and say, I have some questions for you available to
Well, did we contact with him for his availability and then publish that and say, I'd like, I think, I remember correctly, when Russ did it, there's, you know, there were certain days of the week, in certain hours, when that person would be available, and maybe try and do the same thing with Todd, at least by phone contact, so if you have questions, um, or need information concerning um, applications.
Well, we're gonna do probably hard copy here where you can apply for BZI or Plan Commission, and that we can handle internally. Um, and maybe with the Chair of BZI and the Chair of Plan Commission. The other stuff, it has to be directed somewhere. Right now, someone walks in, Julie Cal sends them to me, someone calls Town Hall, it's sent to me. Um, and and I'll be honest with you, if you don't give someone an answer within an hour, I mean, I had a guy call, leave a message, I was in a meeting, I come out of the meeting, there's an email from him, but I'm headed to the next meeting, and since I didn't get back to him in two hours, he called back. Um, he even said, I'm gonna call again the day before I come visit you. Like, I mean, you, there's dozens of calls and emails related to Building Commissioner. So it, they will pile up quickly if you go a week without someone, is what I'm saying.
And Ty and I had talked early on, because we've been back and forth as far as do we stay, you know, hire a Building Commissioner, do we go to county, we've had some other meetings um, where he's expressed some concern about just the lack of planning and building knowledge in the county that is is coming. Um, and one of the things that that we discussed was going to the paper, um, getting away from the the system for a period of time until we get someone in place, because that system is quite cumbersome. Um, and unless you're in it daily, um, you can't keep track of it, but from from a process standpoint, if we have people doing paper applications, Julie and I can, you know, monitor that as far as, you know, what um what advertisements need to get out and notices to people, because it's not just, you know, sending an application, you have to communicate information to the surrounding businesses. Um, and then having Ty available to answer questions. So if someone did come in with questions, we would send them to Ty. Um, and then he would, um, if we're in a position where we don't have somebody. Ty said, you know, obviously, we would have to have this contract set in place, and there's would be some discussion there. Um, but, uh, he would be willing to basically prep. It do some sort of prep with me, and then I would attend the meetings. He doesn't want to attend meetings at all, which I don't worry. Um, but there is a plan. A backup plan if some of this other stuff does not get put in place.
You you have to keep in mind, there there is a bigger issue going on in countywide with a lack of resources in this area. So county is understaffed. You have. The Plymouth guy doing this work retiring this year with the mayor and the and and Cerise. Uh. Argus and Bourbon use Chuck combined. Reman's person who does this work, Trent Wildies retiring in June. So a lot of people doing this work are no longer going to be doing this work in the next six months. Um, or by end of year. So there's a bigger discussion about what should we do countywide? Um, and Ty's having that discussion with. All of the clerks because some of the clerks act as town manager in their towns and presidents of council. You know, he's he's brought together people from each community to have that talk. And that can mean we go to an area wide type of thing, or each community still does their own thing and. You contract part of it to the county, you keep part of it, just kind of depends on each community and what they want to do.
Part of that adds to do, you know. Whether like countywide, if they can find manpower to. To like three towns or four towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to think outside the box on it to, um, you know, look at how do you. It it's a professional skill set. I mean, there's college degrees in this planning work. Ty happens to be very expert, and he represents all of northern Indiana for the state in it. Um, so we have to start thinking about how do you bring that skill set, that professional degree. Into the county because it doesn't exist here other than Ty. Um, and we're having conversations about. You know, a pipeline of interns who agree in that work. Uh, and we've actually, we've been talking to Boo about this as a, you know, project, but. There's also the Lift organization out of the, um. South Bend Elkhart Regional Development Authority or Regional Partnership, I should say. Uh, Lift has placed like two hundred interns across the region. Uh, this is probably not one of the areas, you know, but maybe it needs to be, so we could possibly tap into that. Um, you also have to be able to fund that type of program, so. There's more to delve into there, but.
Are these degrees engineering or?
No, it's usually urban planning or, you know, something related. Um, and I believe you can, I like, I think Ty went on for his master's degree. Um, and there are, uh, year-long internships that are set up through some of the schools. And, you know, their goal is obviously to place students into that type of internship so that they can get jobs later. Have real world experience.
Somewhat tangential, but yesterday at the, um, at the meeting, we talked about zone.
Mm hmm.
Related to this topic somewhat, but, um. Also certainly, the subject has not been introduced there as far as engaging a consultant, but that was one of the recommendations. I think that the, uh, Crossroads Planning Commission is making, or will be making to the council, correct? They understand that?
Um, yeah, the plan commission wants to have a review of their ordinances. Uh, done and, uh, engage in how do you update it to meet the goals of like a comp plan? And so it makes sense to get the comp plan done and then to go into that review process. I know of one company that has expertise in in zoning, uh, that did some work for Otterbin. Uh, most of your planning companies will have like. Uh, urban planning and they're doing comp planning for a lot of communities, or they're doing strategic planning, and some of them have zoning. But, um, very few have that zoning expertise like they have the planning expertise. So, um. You know, you could hire a company like that to come in, work with your local boards, your BZA, your plan commission, you know. Uh, take the comp plan that has your land usage in it and your goals for. Housing utilities, infrastructure, commercial, et cetera. Um, and that would be the time to do it is right after this comp plan publishes. Because you really are supposed to marry the two. I mean, your plan commission members are supposed to have comp plans right in front of them. As well as the zoning ordinance, but if that zoning ordinance doesn't support the comp plan. This has come up even at the regional level with the Marshall County Crossroads and MCEDC. Um, so some of the work that they're doing is is to look at where the gaps are. And it came up at yesterday's meeting that several of the community zoning ordinances do not support the goals. That many of the leaders would have because if you want more diverse types of housing, but your comp plan defines. Two zoning areas or, you know, ours probably has more zoning areas than some of them do. Because we have a lake, um, but what we're finding is the comp, the the zoning ordinance don't match up to comp. And many of them haven't been updated though in years.
I know, you know, some people. Sitting in buildings, small houses as well. You could build a small house, but it's still in call for ISO. Seventy-five hundred square feet long.
Mm hmm.
Which would look kind of odd to be like having a garage on them.
Mm hmm.
You know, and call them your house.
Well, most of these ordinances zone for usage and not design, and most, I don't know of any zoning ordinance in the county that has design. As part of it, uh, their ornament or their zoning.
Yeah.
And that could be an issue too, because you like, you take a historic neighborhood, Plymouth is having this problem. You have a historic neighborhood with historic homes and someone wanted to build a, um. Duplex style home, plain looking home across the street from several historic homes. While someone argued that just doesn't look good, it doesn't fit the design of the neighborhood, but it's zoned to allow it. So if you don't want it, then you have to make your zoning fit with that bill.
Yeah. So they can't pull those of historic building you put up.
Right.
But I think that one which from yesterday was that it's within our internal resources, there's no one with. Knowledge really to, I mean, whether on the planning commission or BZA or for the council, um, to really. Vise these only ordinances, not, we need to go outside to.
I would say the only expertise of Marshall County is Ty Adley. And it's. He had the capacity, uh, and the willingness, that would be the only person I could think of that would have the qualifications to do it.
So we need to phone him and hire that person as well.
Mm hmm.
Find another person that is sane.
I think you're gonna have to think more about, uh, how companies think and recruit.
Yeah.
Go to colleges and be at their their career day fairs and have booths and. Like all the companies that are competing to get that talent, if you're not there, then.
Yeah.
Does our applicant apply as a part-time?
It's posted as a part-time job.
Part-time job.
Up to thirty hours, I think is how we. Expected twenty hours a week, but could be up to.
So he's not, I guess my question is, he's not looking for a full-time?
I don't know. I haven't talked to him, other than to set up an interview.
You want to go through again how many permits you had last year and?
Uh, yeah, we had a hundred and eighty-one permits, um, and about fifty-one million. Was associated value with those.
And that brought in one revenue roughly.
Well, so some of the revenue carries over from previous years, some's not paid yet off of those, you know, depending on where they're at in the system. But about thirty-eight thousand. You mean in terms of permit fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that doesn't include your plan commission BZA application fees because those aren't permits. So there's revenue that comes in that way, but.
Some of it doesn't pay for the advertising that takes them.
We are due to raise that fee, yes, for BZA and plan commission. Uh, more more the time commitment. Uh, you know, by the time I meet with someone on their property, go over their issues. Uh, help them with their application because most of them haven't done it before, or they get their contractor to do it. Then we publish the notice, which has a fee associated with it. Um, then you prep the boards, you print the documents for them and. Email them, you know, here are your cases for this week. Here are the, and some people need. Two hours of your time and some need four and some need three meetings on their parcel and some need one. Some don't need a meeting at all and fill it out on their own because they've done it before.
Yeah.
But we definitely probably have more time invested in the. Publication fees. There's also mailing fees. You have to mail everyone surrounding that property. So there's stamp fees, the time it takes to produce those documents, stuff the envelopes. You know, it's just tedious work, but it's enough that we're probably. I have not done a thorough assessment of if we're breaking even or not. Just kind of guesstimated based on what I know now of it, and I'd say we we're due to raise the fees. But I would want to give you a more exact number of the costs before we would do that.
Yeah.
Rich, is there any area that you want to take us to have that?
Um, I was interested to do, but it's at least can, if you can do that, that's fine. And I think it's welcome to definitely CRC. Um, I'm. Involved in the comp bro, the comp planning process on steering committee.
Judge, quite full, except. Bill, I think you're in a nice environment. Have a full plate.
I think a lot of this requires a lot of knowledge about zoning in a year and a half has not given me that.
Yeah.
I mean, zoning and then you get permits. Um, it's analytics, I. I don't see anything in here, though, that kind of suits my specialty.
I will likely need one of you. I have an ordinance, uh. A zoning ordinance violation, I have to send a letter and they'll get so many days to take care of it, and then if they don't, we have to send a fine letter. It says, you know, now we're gonna find you. And then you start that fine process. I'm gonna need someone to follow that. Um, I think it'll probably get fixed fairly quickly, but I thought that last time I talked to the person who was. Going to take care of the issue, so, um. You don't want that to drop. If we give them sixty days and I won't be here in sixty days. That next letter would need to go out, yeah. And I'm, those can be. Pre-prepared and in a file. I just want somebody to watch that. And it will probably then take. If we don't hire someone before I leave, you have to have an interim building commissioner to be authorized to send that letter. So that person, whoever that is, is gonna have to be the one that signs it. If you're going to follow your own ordinances. And more than likely should be one of you versus just. A random appointment.
You're off the street.
And you, I, we can't really, that person would also have to attend TRC meetings that have to be done fairly frequently. We usually have them twice a month. I don't want you to make that Bob who sits on the TRC because you, we already. Lack a fifth member on the TRC without having a building commissioner. I've been the interim, but town manager sits on the TRC. So when I'm gone, you've got three people on TRC. That's your quorum. All three of them will have to be able to attend. So when a TRC meeting gets scheduled. Um. You know, that's why you need to appoint someone to be interim if we haven't hired someone. Then you've got a fourth person that can sit on TRC and be that person that can write these letters and be authorized to write them. Follow me?
Yeah. I need to say that I probably know more about the zoning. So then. And the other parties here.
Mm hmm.
I don't know if I'm capable of taking, you know, on the. Sure as hell, I bet you're right. At least, you know, sending out letters and sending. It's an interim.
Because that's one thing, even if Ty's helping us with some of the permit side, et cetera. He knows when someone fills out a permit, if they're in an L one or a commercial district, they have to do a TRC meeting. He normally, I I get that notice through the system, so normally I just set the thing up and get going on it. Ty doesn't have to tell me. But in this scenario of Ty had to call someone and say, Sally, you need to set up TRC meeting. That's a public notice. It's calling. Bob Chester and Barry, are you available on this date? We pre-advertise certain Thursdays of the month, so I, we typically have them on those pre-advertised dates when we can. Um, some, some of the owners and developers. On it sooner than the advertised date because that advertised date might be two weeks out. Um, we might be best just saying no, it's on this date and, but. I like Karen now, send an agenda, here's the cases I have for TRC and, um. I make sure it gets on Chester, Barry and Bob's calendar. And typically I remind Chester and Barry the day before. So. That's the other reason I'd like to have a point person for this building commissioner stuff.
You'll be, what, you'll be there?
I, I will attempt to do that. If I fail, I will let you know and you can take it over.
You won't fail, I'll guarantee it.
And you know that I won't be here in October, a couple of weeks. I select then. By then, hopefully we have another person in place that knows a little bit.
I'll get with you on some of that. Sally, you can come to the next TRC meeting.
Well, it seems to me. We know. Well, we will know by next. Well, we will know by next week, whether the thirty, I mean, is it possible you leave before the thirty?
It's possible, but I'll, I'll know next week.
Okay.
And I will, you know, give you a fair, I'm not going to go, I'm leaving tomorrow, I'll.
Don't piss her off.
Give you nine weeks, yes, I could give you two weeks at least.
Yeah.
So, that's March. I doubt we're going to have anybody in place in April. Unless somebody just magically falls under our.
And anything's possible.
Anything's possible, yeah.
Fact that we haven't heard from Mitch worries me.
Yeah. Let's try it one more time, see, maybe he does.
He does work during the day, too, so he may not be able to answer at this point.
One name that's been brought up about building commissioner or anything along those lines in the past, but I don't know where it ever went, was to try to contact Ralph Coker.
Well, he's retiring from Plymouth this year.
Well, and, and I don't know part-time basis or on an interim basis. And I don't know whether it's worth the phone call to see if he, I mean, talking about nobody that knows a lot about what's going on. There's no, ours only except down here, but it's familiar with the permit.
I put out a notice for the job, we've got one applicant, we'll interview it.
Okay, well, you're saying that's the only.
If you guys, if you guys want to do that, I'm going to leave that to you.
That's the only name I can come up with, you know, and then we had some health issues and.
Mitch, Bill Plounder, uh, we're in a work session right now, and it's about quarter after three. I don't know if you're on the other line or not, but, uh, I definitely need to hear from you. Can you give me a call back, please, at five seven four nine oh four three four four one? Thank you.
That's the only thing that I can throw out there that. Lenny, with the qualifications, a lot of the qualifications.
See how that interview goes, and.
Bob, you have anything?
Do you have questions for?
When? Lou, you got anything? You're sitting there. Well, I hope you all feel that you've got something out of this today. Looks like there's a lot, could be a lot on our plate, so. We'll know more from Jenny when she finds out. What your situation is, Neil knows perhaps something next week.
Can you let us know when you hear from Mitch also, please? Can you let us know when you hear from Mitch?
Oh, absolutely, I'll, I'll, I'll get to, get to you right away. I'm just wondering whether we need another work session at some point in time here.
Sure.
Yeah.
You definitely need to have a work session, uh, to cover some other topics, too. Um, a couple of them are rate, rate related. We need to decide what we're going to charge for the electric charging station, which will be, we'll need a public hearing, because it'll involve a fee. Um, as Karen's brought up, we had the sewer water rate study done. We may need to have a conversation about that in a work session. I think you definitely need to have a conversation, uh, and some action items related to an employee retention plan. Those are the three off the top of my head I can think of. Do you think of any other one? Talked lately about?
Yeah, I'm waiting, um, Baker Tilly's updating water and sewer rates.
Okay.
So we've sent them some more information.
So we might be able to get those two rate issues taken care of in the next month or two. But it might, I mean, it's something you're, you're going to have to take a look at it and talk about it in a work session, because it's too much for your meeting, at least get the info and, you know.
It could be a three-hour discussion, looking at the various rates and stuff.
Yeah. We do have some, Bob and I have some good information on the electric vehicle stations. We at least know what some of our neighbor and communities charge. Um, Sean Cerise shared with me Plymouth's ordinance for that and gave me sort of, uh, um, if we could have done something differently note attached with it. Uh, in hindsight, we might have changed some things about this. So that was really good, good to have, uh, and then I've got some of the rates that other communities are charging. And we've heard from May Cog, uh, because they, you know, they organize that grant, so they, they know rates in some of the cities south of us.
And, and that was supposed to be free for one or two years.
Two.
Two.
Yeah, we're at the point we can charge now.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Wasn't it after, you could charge after, like, the first two hours were free and then after that.
Years, you can charge after two hours.
Mm-hmm.
Then at three years, you can charge a little bit, I like to drag that contract up.
Um, Plymouth had one of them, and they charge after two hours, um, but.
Yeah, we can do that now, we could have done that.
And we probably should go ahead and set that up, and then when we know the cutoff date from the grant, you can even probably write in, in twenty twenty-four, this will be how we charge or.
I think it's five years before we're totally.
Out of it.
Separate, yeah. It's been a regress until then, it already hooked with the necessary equipment yet.
Yeah.
All you have to do is you guys set a rate, I'll email ChargePointy, and I didn't know, he needs to figure out where she'll put that money in.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll probably get some information to you for your first meeting in March, or we'll wait and do a work session on it and get it to you at a work session where you can kick it around in a work session.
There is also a stipulation, or a industry standard, I guess, of charging for over a certain number of hours.
Yeah, like if they, if they sit it there for ten hours or something.
Overnight or.
Yeah, you could probably do that through the software, yeah. And, uh, one of the things Plymouth, I think, saw happen is since two hours are free, people disconnect it and then hack it right back.
Oh.
So there are ways we can deal with that, I think.
Or come back in ten minutes or whatever.
Driving around the block.
So there's ways to program it to.
It knows what user's doing, what, how long.
Okay.
Yeah, and so he said that was sort of his, like, if we could do it differently, we might have done this. So, yeah.
I did go ahead and get some names of companies that do employee retention plans. If you would like to take a look at those and put together an RFP to see what kind of cost that, those would be.
When do you think you might have that current?
I have the names now, it's just a matter of putting together an RFP of what, what you all want them to do.
Is there anything relatively local or?
Um, it's like Baker Tilly, Reading Financial, um, they give me about five or six of them, so.
Well, I think that's the important, very important part of what we're involved with now. Um, should we take a minute and talk a little bit more about that? That study?
I think I would just do it as another work session.
Would you?
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you want to do an RFP, figure out what you want to put in it at the work session and then get it put out and.
But you stomach another work session in two weeks?
I think, like, to just stomach it whether we want to or not.
Yeah. How about a work session, and you look at the calendar, Karen, and.
What day are you looking at?
What day's good for everybody?
Do you want to do it before our next meeting?
Hmm?
Do you want to do it like two hours before our next regular scheduled company meeting?
On Tuesday?
Or Tuesday?
This Tuesday, the fourteenth?
The twenty-eighth is the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, maybe the fourteenth. The two hours before the fourteenth, is that what I'm hearing? Bill, is that what you're saying? I don't know, I mean.
Erin, uh, Monday, three, the.
How's that work? Oh, yeah.
I'm in Arizona, yeah.
And that'll be coming.
I just got them the rest of the information last week, so I think they're just plugging in numbers and, so. We just asked them to update it, so it's, with all the changes, I mean, they presented it to us, the meeting of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
And nothing happened, so.
Basically, they're updating it, too.
Yeah, with all the changes and inflation and everything.
Right.
And part of that was trying to figure out if you can afford to do the projects that we need to do without taking out a bond. And we had a discussion with Jeff Rao, and he, he seemed to think that with a rate, with a rate increase, we can, and timing projects strategically, that, that we wouldn't need to take out another bond, which would be wonderful, so.
Well, just basically let us know when they finish.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Set up a work session that.
I'll tell you, yeah.
Works for her and works for them and works for us.
Yeah, now, as soon as I get the information, I'll share it, because they usually reach out and they're like, we're done, when do you want us to come meet, so.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Well, let's look at the fourteenth, two hours before the fourteenth, we, the meeting of March fourteenth.
The four thirty?
Yeah, four thirty. And we'll, your, um, um, retention.
Yeah, if we have some of the, uh, at least the electric, electric charging station fees done by them, can we add that to the?
Yeah.
I don't know that we really have the sewer water one ready yet, but we could at least get the electric charging one done, possibly.
We could add things to this if we needed to.
Good. We might all have anything.
So what's the agenda for this work session?
Employee retention and electronic, electric vehicle charging station fees, and possibly other topics if we can get them done before Karen has to publish.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Okay, well, thank you, everybody.